It's 5:30 and time to call to order our joint meeting of the city and county. And let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got just one item on our joint agenda presented for possible second reading ordinance 171201 for the city. And would accept a motion to approve that for second reading for the city. Motion, Ronan, second by Slate Hansen. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronan.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Hi. Oh, she carries.
Oh, I thought we were doing roll call.
Oh, that was roll call. Okay, here. Let's do a motion then on the ordinance.
I think we just did that.
Dual purpose.
All right, yeah, we did have a motion and a second.
You had a motion and a second. Yeah, so that'll work.
I'm not in a hurry to get anywhere, really. I've got nowhere to be. Be here all night. So, nothing new on the ordinance. Question from the council? Roll call then, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Rachel, you're substituting for your new chairperson already.
Just for tonight. He's going to drive all the way back in.
All right.
We've got a form on the county side and it is ordinance 472. We don't want to move to.
Second.
Second by Fishcrack. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Motion carries.
Move.
Second by Fishcrack. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are again. Thanks for hosting us.
Thank you. Looking forward to six months of not going to your place.
We only do it all year.
Okay, on our city, we've done the roll call. Done the pledge. Need a motion for approving the minutes of last week's meetings.
Moved.
Motion, Rux and Olson.
Johnson.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes approved. That leads us to open forum. There's nobody signed up for that. Under old business, ordinance 171202, possible second reading for a rezoning there. Brett?
No changes from last week. Moved.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Remley. Questions on it? Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Second item is also for possible final adoption, second reading of 171203 rezoning. Nothing?
No changes on this one either.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Rux, and second by Remley. Questions on it? Roll call, please, Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item C is possible second reading of an ordinance relating to hangar leases for five years. Cody, anything new come up to you worth mentioning here?
No.
Okay, we need a motion then for.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Bunsonus, second by Johnson. Questions from the council? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item C is possible second reading of an ordinance relating to hangar leases for five years. Cody, anything new come up to you worth mentioning here?
No.
Okay, we need a motion then for.
Moved.
Second. Motion, Bunsonus, second by Johnson. Questions from the council? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item D, ordinance 171207, possible first reading for an ordinance amending Chapter 58 of the City Code regarding transportation network companies.
Would you flip to the attorney?
I will turn it over to the city attorney.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I had proposed and provided with the agenda packet the amended version of 17-12-07, taking into that all of the language proposed by Councilman Ronan. And Mr. Ronan also did provide a summary of his changes. And so what you have before you on the screen is the word version of this proposal that's part of the agenda packet. And as I recall, that was the working draft that the council wanted to start with for tonight's first reading.
Move to approve. Second. Motion, Ronan, second by Rux. Questions or comments on the motion?
I would like to make a motion to remove all the language that deals with driverless vehicles. There's a couple of different places where driverless vehicles are mentioned, and I would like to move to remove that.
Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Motion add a second. Comments on the motion?
I think we're early.
Your motion?
Yeah, I think we're early. I think we're a little bit ahead of the game here. I don't think that anyone's actually dealing with driverless vehicles. They're not on the roads yet, and I don't see any reason for us to be afraid of them before they're even out there. I just, I think that, I think that it's regressive for us to even be considering being afraid of something that's in the future. So, I don't see any reason for it to be there.
Just so we're clear, first of all, Jennifer's amendment then, I think, would delete the proposed Section 58-33. It would delete proposed 58-83 and 58-109.
Did you say 58-33?
Pardon me, you know, I said that, but I think that's wrong.
That's wrong.
That's not what I'm.
It's the definition. I'm sorry, it's the definition, yeah, under 58.
58-1.
Yeah. But my comment is, you know, I think factually, Jennifer, I think you're wrong. I think driverless vehicles are there and are being utilized, and they haven't had a good safety record. They're experimenting with them, and the reason I put this language in here is, quite frankly, I am afraid of them. I think they, I think they're going to experiment with them. I'd like them to experiment in somebody else's community and let somebody else's community have some accidents and injuries and their bendouts. And I think that can occur elsewhere, and I'd be happy if it did. And when they do finally get this thing figured out, then we can delete these prohibitions. The cab folks talked about wanting to be on the same playing field as Lyft and other groups like that, and so I have proposed that that language would be the same, both dealing with taxis and dealing with transportation network companies.
Other comments?
It would be easy to add it later. I'm in that position in not having it now.
Anything else? Jennifer responds to Rob or you?
No.
Okay. If not, we have a motion to amend. Carl, are you clear with what we're doing? Is everybody in the council clear with what we're doing without us going through it specifically? Ron?
Yeah, I can articulate it just for the council. The motion is to amend Sections 58-1 by removing the driverless vehicle definition and to remove Sections 58-83 and 58-109.
All in favor of removing those, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
I believe the noes prevail. Before we go farther, Ron had mentioned to me what I thought was a very good suggestion here earlier today, that whatever we end up with tonight, that rather than having this scheduled for final adoption next week, that next week we schedule a spot on the agenda for a, what essentially would be an open public hearing for any Lyft drivers or cab drivers or interested people who might want to come and just talk with us before we're under the pressure of voting yes or no on a final adoption, and have that as kind of an interim step to give people a chance to see what we did today. And then if they want to come, fine. If nobody shows up, fine. We just move on and then we put it on the agenda for the following week. And I thought that was a good idea by Ron, so without objection, I would.
And if I could add to that, this is probably an appropriate place to interject here. Just before tonight's meeting, I did receive a call from a Mr. Timothy Burr on behalf of Lyft, and the council had seen the letter that had been issued to the taxi cab companies and to Uber and Lyft. And I was informed by Mr. Burr that everything was moving too quickly for them because of the holidays and stuff like that. They wouldn't be able comfortably to appear tonight. They offered to appear by telephone, but I didn't think that was necessary. I did want to, however, inform the council that I did receive an email from Mr. Burr in which he writes, "Inpertinent part here, that Lyft welcomes the opportunity to collaborate with the city council on the ordinance, and that they are overall supportive of the measure and will offer some additional technical amendments in suggested language after tonight's first reading." So, what they've seen so far is positive. My conversation with Mr. Burr was quite positive, and I think they are, in fact, interested in working collaboratively. So, the idea of a separate hearing, whether it's next week or at a time that, you know, we can coordinate that with Lyft as well, but I do believe that they would appreciate being given an opportunity to provide comments and potentially testimony at a hearing.
Okay, other comments or questions on the main motion to approve first reading as it sits?
I have a couple amendments that I believe.
I thought you had to put them in writing.
I did. I did, and they came out today. I gave them to Ron because I don't have a secretary on the Friday before he left, and it was a little late. Okay. Thanks. But you do have them, and they're up before you on the screen. And the first one is to basically eliminate the rates in Section 58-30. Now, Ron helped me immensely with the language here, so, and basically what you get is that they'll be required, the taxi cab company will be required to post their rates so the passengers know what they're going to be paying. But, you know, so my motion is to basically remove the rates from this section.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dave Moore, argument or?
Well, I think, you know, Rob said earlier that, you know, the taxi cab company wants equal footing with Uber and Lyft. I think this is one way of doing it. I'm not concerned that, you know, prices are going to go completely out of the world because there's a competitive piece to this. We have a couple taxi cab companies. I think this only can improve the service that they offer. These rates have not been adjusted for a very, very, very long time, and I think if, you know, you might find someone wanting to get into this business because there's not these limitations. So, I just, I felt that we should give it a shot.
Jennifer?
Dave, I appreciate you putting this out there tonight, but I am going to be voting against it. I've said before, and I'll say it again, until I hear something from a taxi cab company, I don't want to mess with these things. We, I don't know if somebody else has some other information, but it's my understanding that we haven't heard from our local taxi cab companies at all on this ordinance. And so, to be making changes without any of their input, I think is, I don't think that's smart. I think we should wait until we hear from them before we start messing with things that affect them.
Can I make one comment to that? You already made changes tonight. You just increased their insurance rates.
Mark?
I have heard from the cab companies, and they would rather be on this even playing field. They would rather have the option to raise their rates if they need to, and I think, I agree with this. I agree with Dave on this.
All right. Rob?
You know, I think this is a good compromise, too. I was thinking that we were going to need to adjust these rates, at least. And the reason that we would have, the reason that this council, I suspect, adopted rates was precisely for the reason that Mr. Bunsonus suggested, and that is that there was no competition for years. And so, you'd have, you needed to protect the public by having specific rates. Here, if we do have competition, you know, the marketplace will figure out if this is fair or not. So, I think this is a reasonable compromise. I would also be open if they instead came to us and wanted us to adjust the rates. I'd be open to that, but I think this is a, I think this is a good approach, at least for now.
Glenn?
You know, some of the stuff, the same as Ron, Rob, sorry. You know, I think that us going in there and telling them what they could was useful when there was only one cab company, but now that we have two and now with Lyft, not to say what other transportation network companies come in, there's more increased competition. And as long as they specifically post it, I'm okay with it. Let them adjust it to what they feel the market will bear.
Other question? Dave?
Well, I just want to go back to this idea that, you know, we increased the amount of insurance that the cab companies need. And we've also specifically said, you know, the 24-hour service is there. So, we've put some pretty steep requirements on here. And one of the things that I came in looking at this is that, you know, I want, I definitely want to protect the community from people that could be taxi cab drivers. You know, I think that's important, that we're legislating that. You know, if you have some history, we want to make sure that you're not going to be behind the wheel. And so, there's some important things. I think insurance is an important, that's a protection for the people that are in the vehicle. I thought that was an important piece. So, you know, I just want, I think it's, this is not over with. You know, if we found that, you know, cab companies are going to gouge our citizens, then we have the ability to come back and put these rates back into place. So, I want to, I think it's an experiment. Let's see what can happen with our taxi cab services if we do this.
I think Sioux Falls does something similar, isn't it?
Brookings, I thought, was on the list.
There was a few communities in South Dakota that, you know, they don't regulate the fee. They just sit there and say that they must be filed with the finance office and posted. So, this is nothing new.
Sorry. Other comments on the motion to amend?
Do you want to look at a clean version of what that would?
I'd like to see the rest of it, though.
Oh. The rest of it is simply deletion of the entire section, and I can show you a cleaner version of what that language would be.
Thank you.
Give you a chance to read that before we vote. Okay, the motion is to change that section from what it was to what you see in front of you. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
And that amendment carries. You had another, Dave?
I do. This is dealing with the TNCs. It's in Section 58-104. I've removed Section A, B, and C, kept the identification section of the ordinance, and also kept the records, although I, you know, and I got rid of Section E, electronic receipt, and kept the record disclosure inspection by authorities. You know, so that's my motion, is to remove Section A, B, and C, and what was the other one? E.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a second, so make your case, Dave.
Well, you know, I'm trying to eliminate some regulations here that I think are just not necessary. No cash trips. I think the consumer can handle this.
Well, as presiding officer, I'm not able to second this, but I would have if I'd had the opportunity. I agree with, I think.
No street hails.
These things are.
This is, you know, I'm not sure. I haven't seen one street hill in Aberdeen. I can't, it's like, okay. So, you know, the basic thing here is I want to protect our customers, and that's who the driver is, identification of the vehicle, insurance, and I think some of this other, you know, a receipt, electronic receipt, you're going to demand that receipt, okay? There's no cab company, no Lyft, Uber, that's not going to provide you a receipt for what you're, I think it's unnecessary, is basically where I come from.
Other questions about the amendment?
You know, I appreciate the idea, Dave, of taking out provisions that are unnecessary. I think this is intended to protect the public and maybe intended to protect maybe the business model, which I care about a little less, but I think you don't want, I think the risk is that without these provisions, some nefarious individual could be attempting to pick up riders, not be part of any type of transportation network, and put them at risk. I think the safeguard of having them, you know, electronically hailed rather than street hailed is a protection for the consumer. It assures that the person that is driving, that is picking them up, is actually a driver for one of these transportation networks. Likewise, the identification on their vehicle, that they are associated or affiliated with Lyft or Uber or one of the other companies, is likewise a safeguard for our citizens. Again, it makes it less likely that somebody's going to say, "Oh, yeah, I'm a Lyft driver," and then bad things happen.
I didn't remove the identification piece.
I apologize.
So.
Then strike my comments dealing with the identification.
Okay. Try to remove that from your record, okay?
From the record.
So, street hails is an issue that you're, you think that's important? So, what about no cash trips and collective for services?
Well, again, as the cash trips, I think the idea is to protect the Lyft driver, to let everybody know that they are not carrying cash, so that they are not at risk for being mugged in their own vehicle.
But the gratuity is okay, because we just passed that in your amendment.
Yeah, the gratuity is going to be significantly less than if they were getting paid for their actual fares.
I don't know how that, you know, you're not a big tipper?
I don't tip 100%. Maybe you do, Dave.
I sit here and look at those three sections, really separating the difference between a Lyft driver and a cab company. No street hails. Our cabs can do street hails if they wanted to. No cash trips. Our cab companies take cash, and I think that, to me, that is, these regulations really set the difference on what is a Lyft or Uber driver and what is what we're saying our cab companies can do. I look at these more of creating a distinction between what a cab company can do and what a TNC driver can do, as well as protect some of those things. If someone doesn't have cards, they can't do electronic payment, they can only do cash, then they will take our cab companies, because cab companies can take cash because those people go through a process of our background checks and not some third party somewhere else. That's what I look at, these three things. The electronic receipt, I'm probably not as strong at, but the no cash trips and no street hails, to me, is what really sets the difference between what a Lyft driver is and what our taxi cab companies, the services they provide.
Other comments on the amendment?
A question. Dave, do you know in other communities, if a Lyft driver establishes himself to become a driver, are they allowed the option of taking cash payments? Is that generally how it works?
No, I'm not aware. I think it varies. I think some communities are just following the state law. And this is, this has nothing to do with state law. I basically struck the, you know, some of the areas where state law has not spoken on it.
Kind of my attitude going in, too, that if I'd had my way with this thing from the beginning, we'd run a copy of the state law and pasted it into our ordinance. And, you know, so I've got kind of the same attitude on that.
But I think the answer to your question is that neither Lyft nor Uber permit their drivers to be paid in cash, and part of that's because that's how, that's how the companies get paid.
Right. It's app-based. I've registered with Uber, never taken a ride yet, not with Lyft, and that's what I understood, is that it's only allowed that you use credit card payment.
This doesn't, this doesn't say you can't do that. This removes it.
Yeah.
Removes cash.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? If so, we have a motion to eliminate, what are the, what are the letters again?
A, B, C, and E.
A, B, C, and E. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no?
No.
Better roll call it, Carl. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
No.
Lunsman.
No.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
No.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. That passes with three noes.
Okay.
Before we move on, can I show the council then what that would look like? I did all this work, I want to.
You were ready.
Unpaid work.
So, now 58-104 would look like this, new A, B, and C. We would renumber it as well.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the main motion now for the ordinance as amended? If not, Carl, roll call for first reading for the ordinance, what are we, 171207 as amended?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
No.
Mayor Leeson. Aye. That passes with three noes.
Okay.
Before we move on, can I show the council then what that would look like? I did all this work, I want to.
You were ready.
Unpaid work.
So, now 58-104 would look like this, new A, B, and C. We would renumber it as well.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the main motion now for the ordinance as amended? If not, Carl, roll call for first reading for the ordinance, what are we, 171207 as amended?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Okay, the motion is to change that section from what it was to what you see in front of you. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
And that amendment carries. You had another, Dave?
I do. Uh, this is dealing with the TNCs. It's in Section 58-104. I've removed Section A, B, and C. Um, kept the, um, identification section of the ordinance, um, and also kept the records. Although I, you know, and I got rid of Section E, electronic receipt, um, and, um, kept the record disclosure inspection by authorities. You know, so that's my motion is to remove Section A, B, and C, and what was the other one? E.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a second, so make your case, Dave.
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to eliminate some regulations here that I think are just not necessary. No cash trips. Um, I, I think the consumer can handle this.
Well, as presiding officer, I, I'm not able to second this, but I would have if I'd had the opportunity. I, I, I agree with you. I think these things are...
No street hails. This is, you know, I'm not sure. I haven't seen one street hail in Aberdeen. I can't, I'm just like, okay. Um, so, you know, the basic thing here is I want to protect our customers, and that's who the driver is, identification of the vehicle, insurance, um, and I think some of this other, you know, a receipt, electronic receipt, you're going to demand that receipt, okay? There's, there's no cab company, no Lyft, Uber, that's not going to provide you a receipt for what you're... I, I think it's unnecessary is basically where I come from.
Other questions about the amendment?
You know, um, I appreciate the, the idea, Dave, of, of taking out provisions that are unnecessary. I think this is intended to protect, uh, the public and maybe intended to, to protect maybe the business model, which I, I care about a little less, but I think you don't want, um, I think the risk is that without these provisions, um, some nefarious individual could, could be attempting to, to, to pick up riders, not be part of any type of transportation network and put them at risk. I think the, I think the safeguard of having them, you know, electronically hailed rather than street hailed, uh, is a protection for the, uh, for the consumer. It assures that the person that is, that is driving, that is picking them up, is actually a driver for one of these transportation networks. Likewise, the identification on their vehicle, that they are associated or affiliated with Lyft or Uber or one of the other companies is likewise, uh, a, a safeguard for our citizens. Uh, again, it makes it less likely that somebody's going to say, oh yeah, I'm a Lyft driver, and then, uh, bad things happen.
I didn't remove the identification piece.
I apologize.
So...
Then strike my comments dealing with the identification.
Okay. Try to remove that from your...
From the record.
So, street hails is, is an issue that you're, you think that's important. Um, so what about no cash trips and collective for services?
Well, again, as to cash trips, I think the idea is to protect the Lyft driver, to let everybody know that they are not carrying cash, so that they are not, uh, at risk for being, um, mugged in their own vehicle.
But the gratuity is okay, because we just passed that in your amendment.
Yeah, the gratuity is going to be significantly less than if they were getting paid for their actual fares.
I, 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 I don't know how that, you know, you're not a big tipper?
I don't, I don't tip 100%. Maybe you do, Dave.
Um, I sit here and look at those three sections, really separating the difference between a Lyft driver and a cab company. Um, no street hails, our cabs can do street hails, um, if they wanted to. Um, no cash trips, our cab companies take cash, and I think that, to me, that is, these regulations really set the difference on what is a Lyft or Uber driver and what is what we're saying our cab companies can do. I look at these more of creating a distinction between what a cab company can do and what a TNC driver can do, as well as protect some of those things. If someone doesn't have cards, uh, they can't do electronic payment, they can only do cash, then they will take our cab companies, because cab companies can take cash, because those people go through a process of our background checks and not some third-party, uh, somewhere else. That, that's what I look at, these three things. Um, the electronic receipt, I'm probably not as strong at, but the no cash trips and no street hails, uh, to me is what really sets the difference between what a Lyft driver is and what our taxi cab companies, the services they provide.
Other comments on the amendment?
A question. Uh, Dave, do you know in other communities, if a Lyft driver establishes himself to become a, a driver, are they allowed the option of taking, uh, cash payments? Is that generally how it works?
No, I'm, I'm not aware. I, I think it varies. I think some, some, um, um, communities are just following the state law. And this is, this has nothing to do with state law. I basically struck the, this, you know, some of the areas where state law is not spoken on it.
That's kind of my attitude going in too, that if I'd had my way with this thing from the beginning, we'd, we'd run a copy of the state law and pasted it into our ordinance. And, you know, so I've got kind of the same attitude on that.
But I think the answer to your question, um, is that neither, neither Lyft nor Uber permit their drivers to be paid in cash, and part of that's because that's how, that's how the companies get paid.
Right. It's app-based. Uh, I've registered with Uber, never taken a ride yet, uh, not with Lyft, and that's what I understood, is that it's only allowed, uh, that you use credit card payment.
This doesn't, this doesn't say you can't do that. It removes it.
Yeah.
Removes cash.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Uh, if so, we have a motion, uh, to, uh, eliminate, what are the, what are the letters again?
A, B, C, and E.
A, B, C, and E. All, all those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
No.
Better roll call it, Carl.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
No.
Lunsman?
No.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
No.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye.
That passes with three noes.
Okay.
Before we move on, can I show the council then what that would look like? I did all this work, I want to...
You were ready.
Unpaid work.
So, now 58-104 would look like this, new A, B, and C. We would re, renumber it as well.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the main motion now for the ordinance as amended? If not, uh, Carl, roll call for first reading for the ordinance, uh, what do we have, 17-12-07 as amended?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries, and we'll, uh, leave it to Ron to let us know when a, uh, hearing for any potential additional information could come.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Uh, next item on the agenda, just two items on our consent calendar, A and B.
Move approval.
Motion, Rux, and second by Ronain. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Under new business, this pointed time for hearing on applications, uh, from the chamber for their business after hours, January 11th, February 8th, March 8th, uh, and would, uh, need a motion to approve those three days.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Lunsman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Uh, item B is a hearing on application for transfer of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Aberdeen Hardball Association, doing Legion, business as Legion Baseball, to Charles Heeman, doing business as CH Baseball LLC at Fawcett Players Field, and presume there's nobody here to speak against that, so we need a motion to approve that.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Olson. Questions on this one? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item C is a request for a budget supplement for Fawcett Field improvements. Mark, did you want to talk to us before we dig into this, or Lynn?
I'll just give a brief explanation, and if you have questions from there, I'm certain Mark would be happy to answer them. It's unfortunate, but Doug could not attend tonight's meeting. But Doug is, uh, requesting a budget supplement to enhance the playing conditions at Fawcett Field, and within that $135,000, $103,000 of it would be to upgrade field lighting, uh, $19,000 for infield groomer, and then $7,500 for concrete sidewalk repairs, as well as $5,000 for cage carpet replacements. Our current lighting system was built in the 1980s, so it's 38 years old, and it probably doesn't meet the standard as far as illumination with, with foot candles, but it does work. And so, uh, it was a request coming from Doug, and I'm certain that Mark will answer any questions from a maintenance perspective for you.
I'll ask before anybody else does, uh, Mark, why is this coming as a supplement rather than part of the budget?
Um, you know, I think when we had Metta, with the hotshots, you know, they were in that whole process of when they were coming and different things that just fell into this timeframe for us to do it this way. Their concern is the light quality on the field, and, you know, they're, and again, just because they're, you know, there's nothing wrong with it's not unsafe, but they prefer to have stronger foot candles on the field for their games, where they go. They've moved to a 50 by 30. They've got a 30 infield, 40 outfield right now. They want a 50 infield, 30 outfield foot candle. As he said, the lights were installed. They, this has been on our list for trying to get done for a long time, trying to get the lights replaced. They would have been in it back in the early eighties. I've done well.
So this would have been done, sometime, this would have been done sometime relatively soon, it's just a matter of doing it now as a, as a supplement. Okay. Question, uh, motion from the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Johnson. If you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. Has Doug looked at, or did you guys look at, uh, your current budget and trying to supplement this in some way, shape, or form, uh, of something that didn't really need to be done in 2018 to try to cover some of this?
Um, I don't know if we've had those conversations, Lynn, and we've discussed it. As far as pushing something else off to do that...
Yeah, you know, to try to help it out a little bit, you know, um, it just seems like we're coming into January right now, and we're looking at $135,000, and, and it seems like these negotiations had to have been going on more than a couple of months, hadn't they?
Oh, yeah, they have. About a year or so, we've been negotiating with hotshots.
So to me, that seems rough to, to, uh, come to the council now, when, I, I mean, you've been talking for a year, and you said you've been wanting to change these for a while, and they're getting the heat on this, and Doug's getting, you know, he's getting out of it, but, uh, you know, to, to me, we're, we're at January 2nd, and it seems like a lot of money, and there should be play in your guys' budget to at least come up with some of that.
Well, I, I think they've got other needs that they want to, and they've discussed that with us, and, you know, they're going to be beyond our capabilities too. This is probably the top of that list to try to get done for them. I mean, they've got other needs that they talked to us about on fields, and we've simply told them, our budget restrictions, you know, we don't have any money for those. We're just going to have to see how things play out, and their lights, or, and some of these other things. Again, we're going to have to use the facility, use of this facility. Um, there should be more income coming into the, into the community because of the hotshots. I think we're going to see that, and I think they're going to have some good numbers out there hopefully. We just felt pretty strongly that, you know, we need to, if we're going to do this and get it done, we've got to go now. They have it open for the season, you know, just, like, sure, it's because of the timing issue, but we're going to have to go and get the, get the bid out.
You know, I, I understand that, and I don't think, I, I'm, I'm all right with, uh, getting going, but, um, it'd be my suggestion, at least, uh, that if, if we do this, is that we, uh, if they can't come up, if you guys can't come up with the money somewhere, or parts of the money, that we, uh, subtract this from next year, 2019 budget, in order to supplement this, uh, because I just don't think it's fair to the other departments, number one, nor is it fair to come in at, you know, January 2nd, um, to supplement a, a budget at $135,000, no matter what it's for, because these, these talks have been going on for over a year. So, some of these should have been planned last year for this year's budget, or next year's budget, whatever, but, you know, in, in my opinion, I don't have any problem doing it, but we got to find a way, uh, for Lynn to, you know, maybe take it out of next month year's budget, or, or something, uh, instead of, you know, eating up $100,000 of a contingency fund, or wherever you're going to find it.
Mark, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I just look at this as an investment. I mean, this is, uh, something that's going to be good for Aberdeen down the road, and I think, uh, we'll make this money back, uh, as people come to these baseball games. I think it's, I, I think it's huge for Aberdeen to, to, to bring baseball back, and, uh, this is just an investment. I think we're wrong to, to turn down this request. I think we need to just go for it, and then...
Okay. Who's, who is next? Everybody's got their hand up.
You know, my, my, my sentiment is that, too, um, this is an investment, you know, look at how popular the Wings have become. Uh, this is something on a similar type of realm. People are going to be going to these games, buying tickets, buying food, uh, beverages, all types of stuff. People are going to come from around the area to do it, unlike the Wings, where we don't get any revenue from sales tax out there, we will from this. And it's going to be real tough for me to tell a kid that they didn't get their playground equipment, because we want to spend, we want to cut a budget to make up money, uh, in this respect, uh, for, for lighting. Uh, if we're going to do it, let's do it. The investment will be there for another 30, 40 years. Um, and, and like you say, we'll, we'll, we find the money for a lot of things. We have stuff go over budget all the time, but this is, I think, is a good investment. People will be excited for this. This is another thing to put Aberdeen on the map.
Um, I, I just, um, have to repeat what, uh, Councilman Lunsman said, uh, on day two of a new budget, and where someone's requesting $135,000, that's a lot of money. Uh, there just has to be more planning. Um, there's a lot of things this community needs, a lot of things, that we can invest money in that are needed, but we plan and we budget for that, because we're, we're, we have to stay within what we can afford, what our limits are. Uh, I don't question that these are needed improvements at the field, uh, but it, it just strikes me, um, uh, that we shouldn't be doing something like this on day two of a new budget.
My question is for Lynn. Um, what are your thoughts on these proposed, uh, amounts, and where would the money come from?
Well, within the 2018 budget, uh, Carl puts appropriation within contingency, and so, uh, we could use that amount if, in fact, our revenues, uh, don't, uh, increase beyond our expectations. Uh, we should have sufficient revenues to cover it. Likewise, uh, I put within my budget here a fiscal issue that, uh, if we become within a crunch cycle, then I would see nothing wrong within 2019, uh, using that part of, as part of adjustment to make up for it, but I do think it's a necessary expenditure for improvement for the facility, but I think I have three different options I have. One is hopeful of additional revenues, two is to use the contingency fund, or three is, uh, to make adjustment in 2019 to counteract the expenditure in 2018.
I'm glad you said that. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, but Dave makes a good, good point, you know, if there's some compensation. Lynn's got a long memory. You know, if, uh, if there's a justification to make this up in future budgets, uh, I'm sure he'll do it. I have confidence that he'll do it.
And I, if I remember correctly, they made their official announcement of a buyer in August.
Jennifer, you had a comment?
Well, I'm, I'm really quite honestly torn on this, because I feel like, again, it's the second day of our budget year, and you guys have a big budget over there, and you can do all kinds of things as far as changing your budget around without us having to approve it, and so I feel like, I feel like you're putting us in the position, by asking for this budget supplement, of us saying yes or no to the hotshots, and what they're asking for, when you guys can do that on your own over there with your own budget. So, um, I'm, I'm really not happy to be seeing this, quite honestly, today. Um, I, I feel like you should have tried on your own and come to us more towards the end of the year if you found that you couldn't make that up within your own budget. I don't like it coming to us today, and, and I, I, I'm just not, not sure that I'm going to support it.
I agree with everybody. But my, my question really is for, for, I, I think this is for Lynn. Um, are there portions of this, it sounds to me like the lighting has to be, has to, probably has to be done, but are there other portions of this that are more optional?
Uh, yeah. Actually, I, I think the lights are the non-option within this request and everything underneath that is somewhat optional. Because the lights, if, in fact, you were to approve that, I know that they would put in the order immediately, and then, then I know that they would have, um, within, but, within this spring's or late summer's, I mean, early summer season, so they would be usable.
Okay. You know, that infield groomer looks like a go-kart.
Yes.
Okay, that is, for, for $20,000, if, uh, it, I don't even know the purpose of that. It's not a lawnmower.
You know, again, we, you know, they, they came to us in, in August, after they did their signing. We had a more in-depth conversation on field improvements when they signed off in August with us, and we turned the field, talked about, you know, lights, we talked about fields, security on the field, different things. We didn't have a lot of heads up with them before that. Uh, the groomer is one that, we, we researched this pretty hard. Watertown bought one of these, and, you know, again, it's economically feasible. The groomers usually run around 30 to 40 grand. This is an $18,000 groomer. It serves our needs. We're going to have 32 more games being played up on that field. We share a groomer up there right now on the Players Field, and, um, there's just going to be higher requirements for the hotshots. It's just, it's just going to want much stuff, uh, because simply more higher maintenance on the field, because they've got athletes that are playing at a Division I college level, and they expect that, and so we just need to make sure that we can provide to them the best playing surface they can have. I thought we don't do it now for recreational leagues and northern, but this will help us even more to do that, to be effective. Because we're going to have to have people on staff during the game running this, which we may have other games going on over at Players Field, which we don't normally do that, okay? We normally don't provide that type of service to hardball when they're playing a baseball game over there. We're going to have a groomer on staff over at Fawcett Field, because they're going to require that kind of maintenance, you know, they want that on the field, so, uh, you know, they're going to have people come out, they're going to go on field, and be a part of this, you know, we knew some of this was coming, we just didn't know where they would initially come. We, we turned down quite a few of their requests that they asked for and talked about, with us, just from how they actually stand for it, and see how they do and how they get established, and they'll go down from there. We felt these were the most important issues that were out there for us, you know, to get taken care of. Where it's like batting game, we need to put a surface down there that's safe for them to be in the batting cage to work with, and so that when they're taking hitting, it's there. So, it's just, I don't know how to explain it, it's a little different, higher quality is what they're asking for, just because of the athletes that are there.
You know, the timing isn't ideal. Um, it puts us in an awkward position, but, you know, these negotiations were occurring back in late summer, and anyone that's put out RFPs and done research and due diligence on these kinds of products, you know it takes some time. It can't be done always on a very strict and short timeline. So, I'm confident that the research was done, that, um, there wasn't negligence in the Parks and Rec Department that brought us to this position. It's just, this is when the calendar arrived, and this is where we are. Um, I think this is not the time to be chiseling away some of these, uh, needs. Uh, I think this is the priority, the, the higher list of things that we do. Let's do it, let's reap a benefit. Um, it, it is an investment, let's, let's see it work.
Um, oh, go ahead, Jen.
I guess my question, though, for Alan and for anyone else who, who is making that argument to themselves, do you think if they'd done this earlier and they'd come to us in July with this as part of their regular budget, don't you suppose they could have found somewhere else to mix this in, and they would have come in at their regular budget and not had to come to us? What, what if they were coming to us instead, like Clint said, he doesn't want to have to tell a kid they aren't getting their playground equipment? What if he was coming to us today and saying, I need playground equipment? Would we approve that? I mean, we've got a lot of things that we're looking at this year that we're probably going to have to make budget supplements on. A lot of things, I mean, I'm thinking of three things in my head right now that are probably going to come up this year, and all three of those things are higher priority to me than, than playground equipment. You know, if that's what we're comparing this to, because we know that he's got playground equipment in his budget that he can probably put off for one year.
Other comments, questions?
Um, will they be making any investments out there using their own money?
And they are. You know, they have to invest in, you know, they're, they're putting money in to provide their party areas that they will have for groups. Uh, there's some fencing needs that they have, that they're going to have to do, so they're, they're going to, not at this level, but they're going to be putting in some, some improvements in the park. They're going to put a playground in too, um, that's probably going to run in that 30 grand range where they go to the kids' zone and build. So they've got their, they've got their needs too, that they, that they talked about, so they are making investments within the park, and investments that will stay in the park even if they don't, you know, they will always be there, so.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Just one, one last thing is, I think I'm going to reiterate that I, I would still like to see, you know, um, trying to find some of this budget, money in your budget to begin with, uh, because it feels like a supplement to your budget, um, and I, I'm with Jennifer that this feels like an end around versus a straight add us, because if you would have come with a budget, it would have been different, uh, you know, earlier. But, uh, you know, the lights are a good investment. I'm not disagreeing with these guys that it's a good investment. It's how it came about and the amount of money right now, and I, I think there's other ways to, to supplement that budget, and, and I hope Lynn's memory is long for next year, um, because I think it, some of that money needs to at least come out of next year's budget.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the supplement. Carl, let's, uh, go ahead and just do a roll call.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Like, we're getting close to this, and I, I would just like to give my, uh, thanks to the Parks Department and the local hardball people. When this first came up, there were a lot of hurdles, and, and I and some other people at that first meeting said, you know, let's not look at the hurdles, let's look at ways we can jump the hurdles, and, you know, find a way to do this, if there is a way to do it, and, and I know it's not been easy.
It's going to be a great...
Yeah.
I'm only asking for a call, man.
I've seen reports from some of the other cities, they're enthusiastic as well, so...
They're really good people.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, bills presented for payment. Uh, bid district, uh, streetscape electrical work, $83. AT&amp;T cell charges, $1,031. US bank credit card, $44,007.4. Uh, carpet cleaning for, uh, the city hall to impact janitorials, $796.